I would remind you to silence your cellphone, which I do not think I have done. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly. Listening devices are with Ken in the front row if you need them. And with that, we will move on. Routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
It's all move.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda. Any additions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of September 2nd, 2014.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $431,688.98.
Pay the bills. Second the bills.
Motion is second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item four is the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of August 31st, 2014. That's been received and is placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move the routine actions.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item six is application for abatement. Diane Rekema.
Good morning, Diane.
Good morning. Diane Rekema, Equalization Office. I have an application for an abatement for Diane Burwell, record 76342. This is for the 2013 property taxes of $585.20. This was for an owner occupied.
Any questions for Diane?
I have a question.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Commissioner Barth?
So, on the homeowner's exemption, it didn't happen because of...
There was an error.
By us? Okay. Thank you.
And the motion is second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
There are no notices and requests. There are no planning and zoning notices, and there are no petition for compromise of lien. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is the time where you can come to the podium and speak about anything that is not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on.
Regular business. Item 10 is consider a resolution to approve a property tax payment proposal submitted by the retreat at Pointers Ridge.
Deb, you're up.
Deb is here.
Deb is here.
Deb Klebenoff.
Good morning. I haven't been here for a while.
No, you haven't.
I've missed you, really, I have.
I bet.
Well, I don't know what you want me to say. Submitted a proposal. We...I'm always hoping that things are much farther along than they are. I'm often disappointed. This year was certainly one of them. Between weather and other unforeseen things, we didn't get going as much as we thought. But we do have an artisan residence that's staying there in our A-frame. And the main program that we've had this year, in fact, it's going on as we speak, assuming they got there in the fog, is Lifescape coming out to paint picnic tables. And it's just been a small thing, but it's really turned into this really cool relationship. And so I hope we can find something else next year for them to come out and do. It's volunteering for them, but it's also getting stuff done for us. And it's just very nice. They get a day out in nature, and they get to paint. And the big question always with them is, is it lunchtime? From the time they get there, is it lunchtime? We have a couple more things planned for the end of the year. Harvest table dinner in October. I hope we can have 100 people out there for that. And then the Hague rehearsal concert, second year, will be in December, and then we'll close up for the winter. So, we haven't had a lot of activity, hence income. And I expect that next year, and I expected it this year, but expect next year, some of the issues that we had this year will be solved. And we can start really marketing, because I haven't really done that yet because of some of the...It's hard to invite weddings out there when there's only one bathroom, and it's the men's. So, we're...That is going to be done before the end of this year. So then, next year, we can really start marketing. But what that means is, the proposal that I submitted, hopefully...I know it starts out slow and small, but I really foresee that once the money starts coming in, we can even accelerate that a little bit. But I thought this way, this, I know we can do, if nothing else, and still get it paid in five years.
I'll just give a little background here. There's a tax deed on this property, the retreat at Pointers Ridge, in the amount of And Deb has given us a proposal for that 2015-2016 quarterly payments in the amount of $250 to begin in April 2015, and 2017 and 2018 quarterly payments in the amount of $500, 2019 through 2020 quarterly payments in the amount of $1,000 until paid in fall.
Are there any questions for Deb? Commissioner Kelly?
Deb, are you winterized out there, or are you basically shut down in the winter?
Pretty much shut down. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. And then, one other question, and I'm not sure you can answer it. Of the $12,768, what is penalty and interest on it? Ken, can you answer that?
Yes. You have that. It should be the last document in your folder there. And that...The original tax owed is $9,274.92. Interest on it is $3,388.54. And the fees and other costs are $105, which brings the total up to the $12,768.46. I know a question was asked of me this week about the commission's ability to perhaps waive that. And there is no provision in law. If you're going to reconvene a property back to the owner of...the original owner of record, which is, this case is them, you cannot waive the penalty and interest in that if you're going back to this particular owner. And that the statute that I referenced does allow you to set other conditions for the reconvenance, and that's what you're here today to consider.
Commissioner Kelly?
So, could we, for instance, agree to settle for $9,274 based on a payment system?
No. No. And that if you're going back to the original owner of record, and that's the reconvenance that we're doing, you do not have the ability to waive that penalty and interest cost.
But we have the ability to waive the whole thing if we want.
No.
Not if you're going to do a reconvenance like this.
Okay. I see. So, this proposal is to pay it in full?
Yes.
Kirsten, do you have a comment?
No, not at all. I just wanted to say, the thing that makes us different than some of the other ones we've dealt with is that we're reconvening it to the same owner, and that's a requirement in statute. You could set a higher price, but the price that we're talking about here today is the minimum. You can't go lower than that. So...
Is there any other portions? Commissioner Benega?
Deb, do you have an appraised value on the property?
I do not.
Do you have an estimate of what you...
Well, it's 23 acres, and there is a housing eligibility. So, you probably know better than I. If you guesstimate 23 acres at, what, $4,000 an acre these days? I don't know. Housing eligibility, I'm told, is $30,000 to $60,000, the value.
Okay.
So...But I...A form one I don't have.
To Gerald's point, though, part of it's in the flood plain, right?
Yes, about a third of it.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd make a motion to approve this bargain.
Hold a second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payment plan submitted by retreat at Pointers Ridge.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
A substitute motion by Commissioner Kelly?
A substitute motion would be to have three payments a year, three quarterly payments, but skipping the March payment. So, it'd be a payment in, help me, the sixth, ninth, and 12th month of the year, and up $1,000 each. Question in the middle of this thing. Can I waive the interest?
No.
No.
Not at all.
I like the way you think, Dick.
That's state law.
Okay. So, my substitute motion would be three quarterly payments a year, no payment in March, of $1,000 each.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion. So, Dick, I have a question. It would be $3,000 a year then?
Yeah. They have...And it would be paid off just under...just over four years. Since they have no ability to generate income in the winter months, I think the only place they'd have possible income is on the last three quarters. So, I mean, $1,000 is not a fixed deal, but I think the proposal given to us was not adequate.
Commissioner Pecas?
Well, I guess I look at it, you know, her proposal this year would be about $1,000. And after that, it would up it easily to $2,000 next year. So, you know, in other words, we'd be right where you would be next year, at the end of next year. So...And it gives them a little bit of time to build up a little bit of cash flow. So, yeah, I'm...
Well, I disagree. It'd be in 17 and 18...This is two years. And then, in 17 and 18, it's going to only be $2,000 a year. So, we've got $1,000 first two years, $2,000 the last next two years, and then going to $1,000 until paid and pulled.
So, you're looking at about a four-year payoff as opposed to a five-year payoff?
At three, we'd still have...
$12,000.
Still have $8,000. No. Yeah, two more years. So, it'd be just past 2020.
Commissioner Benega?
I think that frankly Deb knows our cash flow situation better than the rest of us, and for the difference in that one year, it would suggest that we leave the plan as is.
Any other comments? We have a vote on the substitute motion to change the payment plan to $1,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails four to one. Now, on the original motion, which was to accept the payment plan that was proposed, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to one. So, we have a...
Thank you.
Payment plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 11 is to consider recommendation of Criminal Justice Advisory Committee for selection of architectural firm for jail master planning, site development, and cost estimation services. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the commission office. This morning, you're being asked to consider a recommendation from Criminal Justice Advisory Committee to select one of the six proposals that were submitted based on an RFP for jail master planning, site development, and cost estimation services. This is the latest effort in a process to assess future county criminal justice and jail needs. And the four current members of this Criminal Justice Advisory Committee are here, so I will keep my comments fairly brief and turn it over to the committee members who have been working on this project a long time for their input. But I'll just give you basically a short recap of how we got to this point, and then I would defer to any committee members who wanted to speak to this recommendation. And as you will remember, that this effort really started back in 2012, first with the assessment of the Community Corrections Center by the National Institute of Corrections. The commission and Sheriff Milstead asked the NIC to come in and assess the Community Corrections Center. That assessment came back with a number of findings. One of the...I would say, one of the leading findings was that that facility should be phased out and replaced as a corrections center. One of the other recommendations within that report was that a Criminal Justice Advisory Committee be appointed to look at the overall criminal justice needs of the community and take a rather wide look moving forward as the county was assessing future jail and corrections needs. So, shortly after that report came back, you appointed this Criminal Justice Advisory Committee that included Sheriff Mike Milstead, Warden Jeff Gromer, commissioners Gerald Benega and Dick Kelly, and you also had a citizen chairman, Craig Anderson, who was appointed. And so, you're...That group of five really has done a lot of work in the past more than a year, looking at really all factors that would play into future criminal justice needs of the county. One of the main elements of that was an inmate population forecast that Mr. Bill Garnos produced. He was the individual who produced a similar forecast back in the...about 10 years ago in preparation for building the current jail. And there was a high level of accuracy to his numbers at that point. Brought back Mr. Garnos, and he completed a forecast this time as well. Again, that was just one element of the work of the Criminal Justice Committee. The end result of that was putting together an RFP for this site development, master plan, and cost estimation services. And based on that, on that RFP, the county received six proposals. And over the course of, I think, a couple of months now, we've reviewed those proposals. It may not be quite that long, but there's been a considerable review of the different proposals, cost versus value to the county, and really where the best...who had the best proposal, and what recommendation to bring forward to you as a full commission is. So, I would cut my remarks off at that and turn it over to any of the committee members who would want to discuss the particulars of the different proposals and why the TSP Shivehattery proposal was recommended to the full commission if...
Any questions for Robert?
If the committee would like.
Is there any questions for anybody else on the committee? I think this was discussed in building fund last week.
It was, if I might.
Commissioner Benega?
I'd just summarize the fact that when we went through the proposals, we put a high emphasis on the, I would say, the consultant's ability to do the project, and not as much on the architectural and engineering side of the proposal. There was a wide variety of hours that the experts projected that project would take. We ended up basically throwing out the low and the high and using what was pretty close to the middle of all of the other proposals. And after much conversation with the majority of us, we chose Shivehattery with TSP as the consultant and the architectural firm to use. And, excuse me, they obviously have a history with the facility and the campus, and I think that the master plan will give us options at some point on what we would like to do as far as consolidating services and making sure we're as efficient as we possibly can without multiple locations.
Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
This has been a moving target. When we started out, we were primarily just looking at the corrections center. Things were changing there, and changed drastically. And every time we'd meet, there'd be kind of a new way. We've also...The sheriff has instituted a lot of things that will hopefully reduce our inmates in custody. So, this study, we hope, will tell us where to go, you know, where we should go. How...You know, we know where...we know what the forecast is. If it ever wants to be revised at some point, where I'm sure we'll be in consultation with Garnos quite a bit, and hopefully get back with a plan to go forward with. Then, we will talk about the building, and we will talk about specific sites. But they'll probably come back recommending to us, this is where it belongs, on campus, off-campus, wherever. So, this is just the first stage in this thing, and...But it's a very important part of it, because I think it'll give us a plan to work from whether we stage this thing, whether we try and do it all at once, whatever. You know, we have no idea where it's going to go. So, I would urge support for our recommendation.
Any other comments? Any questions for anybody on the committee? We look for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion and a second to recommend the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee's selection for agricultural firm, which was TSP and Shivehattery. Are there any other questions or comments? Commissioner Ken? Sorry.
Just a note for the record. Just wanted to make sure that this was part of the minutes, is that, you know, in the discussion of the advisory...or the advisory committee in reviewing the proposals, it was their determination that this proposal, not only based on price, but other of the other considerations that were laid out in the request for proposals, were most advantageous to the county and more fit the needs that the county was looking for in that when they solicited this proposal. So, we just need to make sure that that is part of the record, and that is part of your consideration.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for our...
Item 12 is consider a motion to appoint Michelle Boyd, Assistant Sheriff, as Chairman of the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. Robert Wilson.
Again, Robert Wilson of the commission office. And as I was going through my comments on that last item, I realized at the very end, one thing I did not mention as I was talking about the work of the committee was the work of Michelle Boyd, who was at least as involved in the committee's work as any of the committee members at all of the meetings and involved in really every point of the committee's work all the way through. The citizen representative chairman, Craig Anderson, had...did resign just recently at the end of...As we were going into interviewing the different firms, and he had some work conflicts that just made it impossible for him to continue. It was the recommendation of the committee that Michelle Boyd be brought on as committee chairman. There are still a number of efforts and reach-out attempts looking at other citizen representatives who would bring a perspective outside of the county to the committee. But at this point, it was the recommendation of the advisory committee that Michelle Boyd be appointed as chairman.
Questions, comments, motions? Sheriff Milstead has a comment. Good morning.
Chief Deputy Boyd, putting her in this position is really the right thing to do. As you know, we...When we had Metro, we lost our director in Metro. We brought her in, and in addition to all of the other duties that she has as a chief deputy, she kind of absorbed that. And so, and now, this is another project. And in conversations that we've had, I think it's real clear because of a number of tasks that this group needs to do, we're going to have to have subcommittees or task teams. And because we're going to go in some different directions. Commissioner Hyburger, we're going to be looking at alternatives to incarceration, pre-trial services options. We've had some great conversations with Jim Seward in the governor's office about possibly piloting pre-trial services here. That's something that's not been done in South Dakota, at least at this level. We're...So, we're probably going to have a committee have to look at that. We're already starting to research some of the risk assessment tools that are utilized in pre-trial services, and also best practices, other places that utilize pre-trial services. There are another number of other things that we'll have to do with this team, and I think the chief deputy will, you know, I'll be there too. But we're going to be spread in a few different directions, and I think it's important to have her there. And I also want to echo what Robert Wilson said, and that's that Commissioner Benega and I, and Commissioner Kelly, have been working on a couple additional citizen representatives. We think the voice of the citizens will be important in this group. But also, as you know, our meetings are public. We publish our minutes, and we...I've been here long enough that I had to go through this once before. And it's interesting that with this Community Corrections Center, it's totally different than the last time we dealt with this, because right now, we just happen to have an aging Community Corrections Center that needs to be replaced, coincidentally, at a time where we need jail beds. Because as I've met with a number of people in the...that are with the Department of Justice and Bureau of Justice Administration, and looked at some of the best practices in the U.S., people are coming here to see what alternatives to incarceration we utilize. We have over...We have more people out...The sheriff's office is monitoring and supervising more people out of custody today than we have in custody. We have over 600 people we're supervising that are lower-risk offenders, 24/7 SCRAM. We're doing drug testing. We're doing interlock device. We've transitioned now to electronic monitoring for work release so that the inmates aren't on the county dime or the taxpayer's dime at night. And we're already up to 33 people on that electronic monitoring work release. So, we're really providing a lot of those, but at the same time, we're bursting at the seams with the jail for the need for secure jail beds. And so, this committee will have a lot more to do than just, you know, master planning for a potential new jail. And as we all know, we don't have the money. And so, you know, this will have to be something that the community understands, and if it gets to the point where the county has to raise taxes to build a jail, that's not an easy sell. But I think if we're open and honest, and the citizens see and understand what we're facing with this increasing number of felons in our custody and dangerous people that should be behind bars and not roaming the streets, you know, I think that they'll understand that. So, this committee is growing in its scope and responsibility, and I think Chief Deputy Boyd will help us herd the cats as we go through this process.
Any questions for Sheriff? Commissioner Pecas?
I think Mike accurately depicted the situation in Minion County, and we've all been apprised of it. And I just hope that that message gets sent out to the citizens that are out there. Thanks, Mike, for just succinctly putting that together in about five minutes, put everything together. So, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
I have a motion to approve Michelle Boyd as the chairman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Barth?
I plan to support the motion, but I do think that it's so very important that we have citizens more involved on this. You know, we've got to have a committee. We can't have a choir. And we've got to have, I think, more than one citizen on the team. And I know that you guys are working hard. I know that you're going to do the very best job. But I think to sell it to the people, as the sheriff said, we're going to have to have more diversity and greater input. We probably need to talk to people in other specialties about mental illness or whatever that, you know, I've heard stuff about the Cook County Jail where on entry, people are assessed for their mental state and diverted one way or the other. And, gosh, we've got a whole city full of people with problems, and just being locked up isn't good enough. And anyway, I think I certainly support the work of the committee, and I'm looking forward to getting some citizens on there, too. So, thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
Well, as the sheriff pointed out, we are working to bring on at least a couple more, and we've talked about even perhaps spreading a little further. So, we want to keep the committee workable, and yet have outside support, too, that we can get. It is...We're working on it. It's just no contacts haven't been completed yet.
I have a motion and a second to approve Michelle Boyd, Assistant Sheriff, as the Chairman for the Criminal Justice Advisory Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Michelle, you are going to be a busy woman.
Busier.
Thank you.
Item 13 is consider a motion... Item 13 is consider a motion to declare 2013 Chevy Silverado pickup asset 71400 as surplus property for purposes of title transfer from the Minnehaw County Highway Department to the Minnehaw County Equalization Department with no monetary consideration. Ken McFarland. I have an empty room.
Excuse me, commissioners. As you know, earlier this budget year, you had done some budget adjustments from some requests that had come from the Equalization Department for some new vehicles that they were proposing during the budget hearing process. You had transferred some funds from the Equalization Department back to the sheriff with an instruction that the Equalization Department make use of some vehicles that were available over at the Highway Department. The Highway Department has in fact brought the titles over to the auditors for purposes of transfer and are requesting that that transfer occur. As you know, you established a policy regarding the transfer of vehicles between departments effective January 1. And one of the requirements, of course, is that all transfers must be approved by the county commission when those vehicles go from one department to the other. And so that's the main reason that this is here. The policy also required that if we were doing some interfund transfers is that the department receiving the vehicle would in fact have to provide some money to the department giving the vehicle. And that, but as you know, during this process, and that because of some tight budgetary considerations, the funds to do that were actually taken away from the equalization. So one of the things that we're recommending in order to facilitate what appeared to be the desire of the commission during the budget hearing process was simply to authorize the, declare the vehicle a surplus, authorize the transfer of the title from the Highway Department to the Equalization Department with specifically, with no monetary consideration for this particular transfer. And then again, that gives you the flexibility on any other ones that come about to, to do so as you wish, according to policy, if that, if those budgetary restrictions loosen up a little bit. So that's the reason we've got the motion as it is.
Commissioner Benega?
Ken, this pickup that's being transferred to Equalization is 11 years old. Does it, does it even have a book value?
I had the same conversation with Commissioner Hybarger. And all's I could go by, I just got rid of a 2005 pickup. And I, you know, it was a trade-in. And so I know what the value of that was. And so, and I didn't look at the book value on this, but I got a fairly decent idea that it's probably somewhere between eight and 10.
Any other?
No.
I'm surprised it would be that much, too.
I can't imagine an 11-year-old pickup.
Pickups are pretty, their pickups are pretty valuable right now. They just are. So.
If we can get eight or 10 for that, we should sell all of the vehicles that are 11-years-old and use it as a fundraiser.
Yeah.
Eight, 10 fouls.
Yeah.
I'm sure it was driven gently by the Highway Department.
Yeah, there you go. That was my thought. It's a two-door pickup. Can I have a motion?
There is one.
Motion. Sir, a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to declare surplus the 2003 Chevy Silverado pickup as surplus property.
I'm sorry.
Benega?
The only comment I'd make is I think it, we would, I would like at least to have the book value of that vehicle. And then I'd also like to see the policy for depreciation on vehicles that are 11-years-old.
And a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 14 is consider a motion to remove 2 HP 8710P laptop computers, serial number CNU 8162KZY and CND 8092SCQ and 5 HP 8530P laptop computers, serial number 2CE 91100CB, 2CE 91100CH, 2CE 91100CH, 2CE 91100CP and 2CE 9256GL0 from surplus property auction list and to authorize the donation to the Glory House. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, last month you had approved of a donation of four laptop computers to, excuse me, to Glory House in lieu of going to the surplus property auction. Glory House got those four computers and were quite frankly thrilled with the computers and the use that they have out of them. And when they took a look at some of the other ones that were available, they made the request to see if they could get seven more of the computers that we had listed as surplus and heading for the auction. And they just had indicated that they would be very, very helpful to their program if they could get these particular computers. We have not moved that property yet to the auction site. And so they're still sitting over at the IT department. And so if you wish to honor their request to have those donated to them as well, we can pull them from the list and pull them from the pile going to the city and notify Glory House that they can come and pick them up. You know, as this is an action that does require unanimous vote of the commission since it is a donation to an outside agency.
I make a motion to donate those seven computers to Glory House.
Motion. Say. Motion and a second to approve the surplus of these laptop computers to the Glory House. And I just have one correction as Cindy said two of them exactly the same. And it was, so one of them that she didn't list was C2CE 91100CJ. And a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
The next item is Minnehaw County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
I have a couple. One is I'd, I'd like to invite Scott to come and talk to us for a moment about the city drainage summit that he attended on my behalf. This is the second year that the city's had it. And of course drainage is an important part of what we have in Minnehaw County.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, County Planning Department. Last Thursday, I attended the mayor's Big Sioux Water Summit. It was an afternoon event. The mayor was, was sort of kicked it off and gave a keynote speech about how the city is involved with a vegetation management plan for their drainage ways in this, in the city, how that benefits water quality. And the trials and tribulations that's caused for his, for the city because it's something new and the citizens are getting used to that. And then I attended four different sessions. One was water, stormwater impact on water quality. That was a session that was put on by State DNR. And then a gentleman, I'm not sure how to pronounce his name, Jack Majeris from Moody County, gave a very good presentation. He's a soil conservation, he works for the Conservation District. And he gave an update on the middle Big Sioux watershed project, which is really the lower Big Sioux because it's basically everything from Brookings down to the Iowa border. And that primarily focused on improvements that they're making, a specific project in our county and somewhat into Lake and, Lake County. And that is on the, on the Skunk Creek watershed where they're working with ag producers to help defray the cost of fencing and water supply to keep cattle from getting right down into the creek. So he gave a good update on that. Then I attended a session that was put on by Confluence, which is a landscape corporation here in town. And they talked about their, their work with the city on how to, how they're benefiting, trying to improve water quality. They primarily focused on that large retaining pond down in Galway Park in the city, which is actually in Lincoln County, but how that retention pond is being used to improve water quality. And then finally, I attended a session on bioreactors. And I know that's a very, of interest to us. There's only three in the state. They're looking at putting in three more. It was a very interesting discussion. The Dutch gentleman, as Commissioner Barth has indicated, is moving to Minnesota. This new gentleman is down in south. His name's Daniel Ostrom. And he's going to be replacing the Dutch professor that is leaving. And so I introduced myself, had a good discussion. And then at the very end was question and answer. So I, it was very, it was very, very good. The mayor indicated that they had actually doubled the attendance from last year. There was a lot of high school kids there, probably 20 from, I think, Washington High School. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, but I had a chance to talk to Jay Gilbertson's and, and so it was, it was good. It was sponsored by East Dakota and Raven and I think one other organization as well.
Any questions? Commissioner Barth?
So one of the things the city is doing is leaving their grass longer in their grass waterways to clean the water a little bit more. But one of the things that's going the wrong way is the chemicals from snow removal are not good for the river, et cetera.
Yeah, there was some discussion on a couple of my, in, a couple of the sessions about the de-icing, the chemicals that they're putting on the streets in the winter. It was brought up by one of the attendees on how it burned all her grass in her, in her boulevard. And, you know, that, that's, that's a tough, it's a tough balancing act for the city because they, you know, they are sort of mandated by the public to keep the streets clear and ice free. And yet it doesn't impair the water quality of the Big Sioux. So I don't know how they're going to deal with that.
Any other questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott. Commissioner Barth?
I guess I'd also like to bring up some discussion we had at the Homeless Advisory Board yesterday. One thing that came up is that 84% of the students at the new McGovern School are below the poverty line. And it seems almost like they're setting it up as a concentration camp out there where if you're walking home, they call the cops. I mean, we'll just hold you here until you graduate. In any case, it's, that's a little dismal. But there was also a, a study on fair market rent values in our area. And they do the whole MSA, the whole metro area, not just Sioux Falls. And according to the federal study, rents have gone, gone down. That's not what we're finding locally here. But according to them, you know, like a, one bedroom has gone from 604 to 565, et cetera. And I guess I'm a little reminded of the studies that the state has done on the number of folks on probation that we have where, you know, whatever the numbers are going into Washington DC, they send us back whatever they want. And when you consider the fact that they're using rents in Sioux Falls and balancing it against rents in Flandre, my question is, you know, does a 200-unit facility in Sioux Falls have the same weight or greater weight than a fourplex in Flandre, you know? It's unknown. But the studies, and this could lead to a cut or reduction in federal assistance, et cetera, because their numbers show that it's cheaper to live here than before. I guess that's what I wanted to mention.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other? Commissioner Pecus?
Yeah, last week I attended training on, it's going to sound very interesting. I attended training on the correct valuation of conservation easements, which was really interesting. It was six and a half hours. You all wish you were there. But anyway, it was interesting because the IRS flew in their trial team. And essentially, there are about 150 appraisers there. The NRCS was present as an attendee, not as a presenter. And it was very interesting to see how there have been great altercations and regulatory activity in relationship to the evaluation of conservation easements. And they absolutely do affect Minnehaw County. When the NRCS was present, some issues came up that actually do affect Minnehaw County. And it was interesting to see that the attempt was made to try to make it easier to get conservation easements and to go ahead and move forward. And instead, Congress created an entirely new regulatory scheme, which of course the IRS has taken to heart. And of course, they have taken a very aggressive view of the amount of money that people can deduct off their taxes related to the conservation easements they give the federal government. So it's a really interesting explosive area that's going to have ramifications for every state that involves itself with conservation easements. So it's going to be a real challenge, I think, moving forward. And anyway, it was concerning to say the least to hear what the IRS was essentially sharing with, with many of the 150 appraisers that were there. Because they had a lot of questions and confusion regarding that. And they're the ones that are going to have to carry out this policy. And quite honestly, from the tenor of the group that was there, I can see that there aren't going to be a lot of people that are really interested in undertaking the attempt to try to get a conservation easement completed. There's just way too much liability. But anyway, they regulated it to death. So that's my opinion. But anyway, it was an interesting training that I attended.
Thank you. Commissioner Benega?
Very briefly, I attended the CCOG meeting last week and it was the annual budget hearing, if you will. We did approve a 2.1% growth in the CCOG budget. And all of the communities in, in the county or in the region are again involved and current members except for one. And that, I guess, has historically been the case. So there's no major change in the supporters, other than the budget value, if you will, will be going up. And I think we projected that in our budget. So we're in good shape with that.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? Move on to new business? Is there any new business? Any old business?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I went to Mayor Huether's press conference yesterday on Van Nistelrooy Park. And certainly he brought up some, some other issues which haven't received much attention in the media and is going to push for banning alcohol. And I, I have come around to agree with him. I certainly was concerned about, you know, closing it down there and having it move somewhere else. But the degree to which things are escalating there, and he had the bottles to show it. You know, it went from beer and wine to whiskey and hand cleaning materials. It's just, it's, it's bad. And, you know, he talked about, you know, the porta-potties and the issues that have been with cleaning them, et cetera. And he's been bold enough to go over there a few times and actually interact with people. And it's, I think it's a difficult situation and it's unfortunate that people can't behave. But I, I agree with the mayor at this point.
Any other old business? Ken?
Just one.
I almost called you commissioner again.
Commissioners, just as a reminder and for the public as well, there will be no commission meeting next Tuesday because we will be in Pierce at the annual counties convention. So no commission meeting next Tuesday.
And I believe Commissioner Barth and Commissioner Kelly and myself will all be attending next week. So you don't have a quorum, so you can't have it. So, all right. There's no more old business. I would look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for litigation and legal briefing.
So motion, second.
And a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Meeting adjourned.